Okay, I'd like to call to order the January 26th meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees. Jackie, would you lead us in our invocation? You're muted.
Thank you. Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight. While it's cold and it's snowing, give us your blessings on what we're about to discuss tonight. Let our focus be on the community and at your will, in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, and you guys would like to join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag-
indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. What we can do here? Stop sharing, there we go. All right, next item on the agenda is roll call, Ms. Manley.
I'm Dignan.
President.
We gotta do the intro?
Oh, yeah. Ken Dignan from Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Manley, Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County, Zelenak.
Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Chick.
Here, Janet Chick, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Otto.
Jack Lenato, Washtenaw County, Michigan, Northfield Township.
Moko.
Nate Moko, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Nelson.
Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
All here.
We have a forum. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the January 12th meeting. Are there any comments, questions, corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All support.
Motion by Nelson, supported by Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Moko.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Next is adoption of the balance of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as presented. Is there support?
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Moko.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is petitions and communications, citizen comment, call to the public, as it may be. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? If there are, please raise your hand and I will unmute you so you can address the board. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Olney, you've been unmuted.
I'm Olney, Northfield Township, President. I just had a question about the item, the town hall for the town hall meeting. Is that going to be for park input or is that going to be for the entire property? As the park has now been decided between 10 and 12 acres. I didn't know if this town hall meeting was going to be for just that portion or if it was going to be for the entire development. Since we've already had town hall meetings and a North Village master plan created for the rest of the property, I guess. I guess it can be separate projects, maybe? I don't know, maybe we're not there yet. And I was also wondering if the township is currently accepting offers on 75 Barker, you know, if someone came in, would the township have to entertain that offer? I know there's some interest in the property. It seems like it's just getting caught up with parking lot issue. The appraisal for the lot or for 75 Barker, it says 125,000 if buyer has to allow public parking and maintain its upkeep of the lot. I think it would be kind of silly for the township to split the lot and then put the burden of the township to maintain the half of the lot that they still possess. When, you know, the cost that were going to accrue is going to quickly add up to the difference in whatever the sale of the property would be, so. I just think it's just my opinion as a resident that it would be wiser to sell it like we had a plan already in place for an appraised value of 125,000 and let whoever buys it be responsible for the upkeep of it. Let's have to allow public parking on a portion of it. And I was wondering if there was, see, the manager report has a update sewer backup issue. Wondering if there was an update for that update. Good evening.
All right, thank you, Adam. There any other members of the public that would like to address the board at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing no others, we'll move on. Board member comments and manager clarification. We're gonna, I'll just say, we are gonna discuss what the town, what the direction is for Parks and Recreation in regards to holding a town hall on the park. When we get to that, and we'll discuss 75 Barker when we get to that. Is there anything else anyone would like to add at this point? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on, correspondence. I do not have any. Mr. Ains, did you have any correspondence? That needed to be shared?
No.
No, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, public hearing. I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2021 through 2026 and invite Natalie. There she are, there you are, to present on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Is there support?
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Otto, to open the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Moko? I think that was everybody. Seven zero. Nelson?
There we go. Okay, with that, I'll turn things over to Natalie so she can present. You there, Natalie? Cannot hear you at all.
Can you guys hear me?
There we go.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, I was so worried. I'm like, I'm unmuted and they should be able to hear me. Okay. All right, thank you, trustee. Let me go ahead and share my screen. I'm just gonna do a very brief presentation tonight, just to share any, you know, dates and okay, there we go. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, perfect. So I will apologize. I think an old version of the presentation slides got put into the packet, so I apologize for that. I must have put the wrong document in there. But the presentation tonight will be a little different. I just wanted to kind of address and talk about some important dates and approvals that we've received thus far. So as you guys know, I know we talked about it at the previous board meeting. Per the MDNR standards, we had to post the plan online by December 27th for the 30-day public comment and public review period. So everyone has, I hope, gotten a chance since December 27th to view the draft of the plan online through the township website. And then based upon that, we were to accept comments from township administration, boards and commissions, and community members to implement that into the plan before we submit it to the DNR. And then we wanted to do two updates of the document online, just to keep it simple. You know, so there weren't a bunch of different versions kind of floating around out there. On January 13th, that was when we had updated the version of the plan to implement some comments that we had received up until that point. And then January or the version that was posted on the township's website yesterday, the 25th, incorporates all the comments that we've received to date. And then also, just to let everyone know, in case anyone has, you know, anything that they've noticed recently since any of these dates that they think should be edited in the document. We can still add those in before we submit it to the DNR by February 1st. But that is the final deadline that we must submit that document in order to apply for grant funding and be considered for that. And then this is just a short overview of the approval and adoption timeline. So like I said, December 27th, that was when the draft plan was issued online for public comment. On the 20th, we received recommendation by the Planning Commission for the Board of Trustees to approve the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then on the 21st, we received approval and adoption from the Parks and Recreation Board. And then today is the last time that we'll be presenting the plan to the board. And then on February 1st, that's the date that we'll submit everything to the DNR. They asked not only for the plan but for some supplementary information as well, like any, you know, raw survey data that we had. Other, so minutes from board meetings and approvals and things like that. So we'll be submitting all of that on February 1st as well. And then that is all that I had presentation-wise. I definitely wanted to leave room for questions and anything else that you guys may want to talk about or touch on. But we are asking for approval and adoption from the board for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan in order to submit it by February 1st to the DNR. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Natalie, I'm gonna go to the public now for any participation in the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board during this public hearing, please raise your hand and we will unmute you so that you can participate. Give it a moment. This time, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. We'll give it another moment or two. Oh, here. Nope, all right. All right, with that, board members, if, I don't know if you have any comments during the public hearing portion, we can address things when we take up this under our action items for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So if no members of the board have a comment during this time, I'll move to close the public hearing for the Parks and Rec Master Plan 2021 through 2026. There's motion by Dignan, supported by Chick.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Moko?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the discussion of the communication plan. You'll find in your packet, there's various amounts of information and a memo. I know that Ms. Chick had put it on the agenda. I've got quite a bit to add, but Ms. Chick, did you have something that you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted to give, yeah, a little bit of history for the new members. We actually started this back probably a year ago. Lenora and I took on doing a communication plan. And although the township does a really good job of offering opportunities for the residents to keep informed of what's going on in the township, most of them are based on internet use and it's really difficult for those that don't have that access to get information, especially on the bigger issues. I'm not so sure, you know, all the mundane business stuff is things that they want to hear about all the time, they can if they want to look into it. We do have minutes available for the public. We have meetings in person. We used to. We have meetings virtually, which we actually have more attendance for the virtual meetings than we ever had for the meetings in person, so that this is actually a good thing. We have our website that people can go to. We have social media where there's announcements and notifications about what's going on in the township all the time. We will even email you information, agendas, newsletters, whatever you want, if you sign up on the website to have that sent to your house. And we also do newsletters which are online and mailed and notices. So there are opportunities, however. There is a level that we did not access, and that is mailing out postcards or some kind of a notification to the residents that don't have the ability to get information online. So that was basically, we were tasked with, especially when the town hall came up for the North Village area. People said they didn't know anything about it, although we'd been talking about it for four years. So we wanted to have a town hall. The people asked for it. We had one already. They asked for another one. We never got to do it because of COVID. So we put together something that we could actually send out I'm sorry, postcards or a banner if necessary, whatever the township decides they want to do to send to all the residents to let them know that there will be a town hall and that they do have the ability to participate in it and what the town hall is going to be about. So that's what we came up with, the communication plan, not only for that, but for any other pieces of business in the township that has a large impact on the majority of the residents so that they're notified of things going on in the township as well. So basically, that's where this came from and we are finally getting to look at it a year later because we want to get a town hall scheduled and we want the people to participate in their ideas and comments on the North Village property or on anything else they want to talk about, so. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. I'd like to put forth a motion on the communications plan. I'd like to make a motion that the, that the Northfield Township Board does do multiple things. First, that once a year, that the Northfield Township Board send out a postcard to all registered voting households in Northfield Township. Communicating that where important meeting information will be posted, how to subscribe to notifications of that and information on all of our social media assets and where they can be followed. In addition to that, I would move that we also create a third of a sheet of paper size card that is full color, that also has all of that information on it and that that card be included in all three tax mailings that go out from the township every year, that it just be included as part of the stuffing that goes along to the taxpayers. Third, that the township procure three four-foot by eight-foot size boards that can be posted on the two township fire station locations, both the Main Street location, Fire Station Number Two, and then a third one at the North Village Park property that states important public hearing with a website and social media link to where they can find out more information on that. I believe those boards could be used anytime there's a public hearing, but also anytime there's an important public meeting. Calling attention to the areas. That's my motion. I would also indicate that I think we should pursue looking at, and I'm happy to discuss this with Tom Kaiser at the school, the cost of digital boards to be put up on multiple properties of the township. So my motion is those things. Is there support for the motion?
Jackie, you're muted.
I'll support the motion.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, I support the motion with a friendly addition.
Okay, support by Zelenak, discussion. Ms. Otto?
I would like to have a formal communication plan. Everything that you had could be put into this plan in addition to more things such as when we have communications on different types of announcements, you know, who should be contacted? What type of channels, communication channels are we gonna use, that type of thing? It should be a more formal. I sent copies of examples to Lenora and Janet. While I think that we do well with individual projects, we don't do well overall on the township. If we had a formal communication plan, all you had to do is just look it up and say, we're doing this, this is what we need to do, and you'd automatically know what needs to get done.
I think that's a great idea. I guess the question is, is can the folks that worked on the communication plan put that together? I mean, certainly, I would think in this day and age with as easy as things are, that a blast out to our email group and a post to all social media assets are no brainers. Those should happen automatically. But defining what is a significant item is important, you know, what is, what is significant enough to constitute posting the boards? You know, that, and the formal communication plan could define that.
Exactly. I mean, your communication plan doesn't have to be a master plan type thing. It could be less than five pages, ten pages. It doesn't have to be long.
Could be a page, it depends, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that was my comment. I don't have a problem with creating a formal communication plan. It's just if you make it too lengthy, it gets too bogged down in too many words. I think if you do bullet point, bullet point, bullet point, doesn't outline couple, three pages maybe at the most because people aren't gonna read it, number one, if it's too long.
Internal use.
Even then, we might not read it.
Yeah, but.
Well, that's a shame on us, then.
What we post, when we post it.
We need to make it simple.
And where.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So.
I think Ken's on the right track 100%, though, with one mailing a year max at the cost of what these mailings are. It's, I mean, I think you just, you're right, direct people to our website. Everybody has access one way or another to the internet. It's the way of the world now.
Well, that's what Janet was trying to say, is that some people don't have access. So what do you do with those people that don't have access?
And I think that's where the four-foot by eight-foot billboards at all three sites that say important meeting, you know, you know, and at some point, we could even put our phone number, you know, if we had to, you know, where they could call in. Mr. Nelson?
I mean, just a thought, if someone doesn't have the internet, they can't even watch these meetings right now. There's a certain degree of participation that you can or can't get. With the cost of the mailings, I think one mailing a year is probably good. I really, I really might abstain on voting on anything right now because I just, I think we should have a formal plan, like, like maybe three to five pages, something something that we have on paper so that even past this board, there's a set in stone way of doing things and for us to something that we can move forward on and make changes to if necessary.
And this, 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 this motion is simply the, this has nothing to do with a specific event. This is a postcard once a year to say, this is how you can connect with your township. The three mailings that go inside the tax bills and the boards, so that when you do have your communication plan together, when those boards go up. That's, that's the motion is just for those things. This, that has nothing to do with any specific agenda item. It's how do we make sure the public knows how to communicate with us? And this is, that's what this is. Ms. Chick?
So the three mailings that go within the newsletter, that doesn't cost us any extra except for the printing for the postcards because it's included in the mailing of the newsletter.
Right, and that's what those-
That's a little overweight.
Yeah. And then when you talk about the four-by-eight signs at the fire stations, are you talking about the sign out front that we already used to put, you know, the meetings, or you talk about a separate sign?
Talking about a four-foot by eight-foot sign that is very legible, that is, you know, very much would attract attention, that can be taken down and put up throughout the year, and as long as they're decently cared for, they'll last a very long time. They're cheap, they're less than $100 apiece. They're cheap. Yes, Mrs. Zelenak?
So I agree. I mean, to me, we had a park public hearing plan. And in there, it talks about North Village, which was, has been a hot topic. And there was no one commenting on the park plan today at our public hearing. So the question is, is everybody good with it? Did everybody know about it? You know, do people care? But I think it's, you know, it's a big, to me, it's a big deal. I mean, we have made a significant decision on the North Village. Basically, at one point, it was a minimum of five acres to 10, a minimum of 10 up to 12 acres. And I think that needs, you know, people need to know that, especially people that were somewhat upset about the change going, you know, to a minimum of five acres. And I think this is at least getting a best foot forward to say, we have tried a different mode other than social media to reach out to the people by, I think, the banners of, you know, there's an important meeting. You know, go to the website or call. I think we need to put the number because some people don't have the website and get the information, and then they can determine if they would like to come or not. And as far as putting it in the tax bills, there's two tax bills and one assessing. I think the assessing is actually going out pretty soon, February 14th. Could be wrong in that, but, and then just, you know, a card that says, hey, sign up. There's a lot of things happening in our township. Or call the township. And then the other postcard, I think, is an addition. But I think the other two, number two and three can be done relatively inexpensively. And I think it would at least put our best foot forward of trying to reach out to the public on major decisions.
And we'd have to ask Ms. Manley how feasible it is to get just a list of voting households. Not every voter, but every voting household and whether or not that's possible. And I don't know.
We could do that.
Okay, yeah, because that would, that was that's for the postcard, yeah, because those people are not always covered by mailings in the tax bills because they're not necessarily all, but it is a chance to get ahold of them. Ms. Otto?
So my concern too is that if you don't have a formal plan in place, this has happened many times to where we are sending out a tax bill or we're setting out some type of assessment that we forget. And at the last minute, we're scrambling to try to get it into the tax bill or trying to get into some type of flyer. I think you, with having a plan, you have the dates down when things need to go in every year. And then this way you plan ahead instead of and instead of just being, you know, shooting from the hip and being reactionary.
The idea of this would be that the postcard or the card that would go in the mailer for the tax bills would never change. It is the resources. These are our social media assets, this is our website.
You can add that to the letter.
Well, I'm talking about this card is in every tax- Well, uh, I'm, I'm talking about this card is in every tax mailing every time. Always telling people to communicate. You give fifty thousand of them to your print house that does your mailer and they always insert it in the mailings we do. And it never changes. We don't have to worry about, oh, did we remember scrambling at the last minute? It's just another way of saying, this is where you'll find out information about what's going on in your township. And, and it's a way to sign up. You know, this is the way to sign up for our things. That is the biggest thing is, you know, people say, well, I don't know where to sign up. Well, if we can get this in front of them four times a year, I think that we have went well above and beyond as well as every time the communication plan is triggered, we put up these, you know, signs. Um, and then we look at digital billboards for maybe, uh, both of our public safety buildings, you know. I, I, I think we're along the right track. I think your, your, your communication plan is important. And I, I, I think that is, you know, very important for staff to know where do I post it? When do I post it? And, and, and do I put these signs out? Though, those are, those are three important questions that every time we have something that comes up, they can look at it and go, oh, yep. You know, is it a budget hearing for a fire truck? You know, is it a budget hearing for, you know, or is it a, uh, is it a, uh, public hearing for a rezoning? I mean, you know, these, these are, do those things fit into, does a rezoning qualify as something where you should post those? Yes or no? Because everybody within the rezoning area, according to our ordinance, is notified by, by a, you know, by a mailer that's required in our ordinances. Does that require then you post four by eight signs everywhere? I don't know. It's something that the communication plan, well, the, the rezoning guy does, but, but, but if it's out on territorial, I don't go out there very often. Maybe I don't know about it. But, you know, it, it, so certainly, this is only step one. The plan has to be in place. This is a way of saying, this is how you can find out information on a regular basis. And we're hitting people at least four times a year with a, a small cost to us with the one postcard mailer. Um, and the rest going before us, so.
A separate motion after yours.
So.
Ms. Zelenak?
So I do wanna make one comment on the newsletter. Um, for the tax bills, we inform the township manager, the supervisor, as well as the administrative assistant six weeks before the newsletter is due. And then we send out reminders two weeks before it's due because we haven't received anything. So there is a definite plan because we have to do some planning and treasury to get the tax bills ready. So once we get our plan together, we communicate that to those states, state, it's going to the printer. So with, um, a new supervisor, I, my expectation is that's gonna stop. And it is not gonna be a scramble because we do send out notification a good six weeks before it's due.
Ms. Zelenak, those dates, uh, tho- those time changes, those timings don't change year by year, correct? But the timings don't.
Correct. Give us, you know, a day here or a day there depending on holiday or something like that, but you are correct. It's, it's pretty much, it should be on the calendar. But we do sit with assessing to make sure, and when we do our plan, we do communicate that to the three individuals I mentioned.
So it's an event that should be on our work plan every year?
Right, and, but we do remind you. And we will remind you. Well, I, that part, I don't know about the assessing part that the assessing sends out. But certainly the taxes, we will let you know that we're getting ready for our tax bill, get ready for your newsletter. And then we'll send out a reminder two weeks before that, hey, guys, we haven't gotten anything, we're getting ready. Cause we don't hold up our tax bill. And one time the newsletter wasn't ready, so it didn't go in. Cause we have to get the tax bills out.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zelenak. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Um, sorry, Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Uh, I'm abstaining.
Nelson?
I'm abstaining.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
So five yeses, two abstain.
Okay, Ms. Otto?
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion that the township board adopt a communication plan. And that we have a draft available within the next, um, three board meetings. So that gives you about forty-five days to do it. I don't know who would want to do this if it, um, is the current communication. Uh, people who worked on the communication in addition to other people, but it should have at least minimum the communication channels, the form of communication for each channel, the targeted audience, objectives, costs, responsibility, and acceptable frequency.
How about like the first meeting in April? Is that what you're thinking about? Sorry, I'll support so we can have discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Otto, supported by Zelenak. Uh, for a communication plan to be drafted and presented to the board by the first meeting in April. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions on, well, uh, let's talk for a second about, uh, who is gonna be involved in that? Um, I think that the manager has to be involved in, in getting with, uh, Jennifer to put together what assets we use out on the web. I think that i- it's important that, uh, those communications be posted through. I, 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 I think it's really important when you look at things like that, that things come from official channels. And it's just, it's, it's important because there's no question to it. And right now it doesn't, it just gets a smattering across all these different Facebook groups. Some groups are left out, some groups that's on there twice, you know. And, and it's not a, a, a official channel. I mean, and then if, if you, we as individuals, you know, me as, 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 you know, John Q. Citizen wants to then share it to a particular group or to a particular, uh, page, I can. But, um, I just think it's, that's gonna be something that's gonna be important as part of the plan is where is this stuff communicated at? And, and to ensure that accurate information and the same information is replicated from one place to another to another. So, Mr. Ains could get with Jennifer and figure out, you know, what Facebook, our, our official Facebook channels? What, what, you know, do we have an official Twitter account? Do we have, you know, um, you know, she's, the, the new website's gonna be coming online. And, you know, where on that website should this always be? You know, those are the things that obviously need to be worked on. So I don't know who could work, who, who on the board wants to work with Mr. Ains on that. But, uh, I think it's important we identify those individuals for this moving forward.
I hate to overcomplicate this. I mean, it, it, we were talking about a mailing stuffed in with the taxes, which will hit every single taxpayer. Now we're talking about the eighteen different Facebook groups that, that the town has. I think we're getting a little deep here. Just my.
Right.
Well.
Plan has to say where things are gonna go. It doesn't have to say it has to go to all of them. It just has to say where it absolutely must go. Meaning the township, every time something comes up, will post it here, 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 and here. So that the staff knows where to post stuff. Yes, Ms. Chick?
So I'm thinking because it sounds like the administrative, uh, knows the dates, uh, that things are going to go out. That perhaps Mr. Ains and Jennifer could work on a communication plan and then bring it to the board.
Okay, so this is, yes, Mr. Nelson?
Um, just a little response to Nate here. Um, most of the time, at least from what I see on an administrative level, the, the entire social media post or something, all the text is, is just copied and pasted to different, like, social media groups. So it could be seen, post a million times. The, the most effort being spent is either just posting it to those groups or making the post itself. Um, I think, I, I don't, I don't think that would take too long. It's just a matter of how, how many different social media accounts do we want? Where do we want this posted? I, I think that's, that, that definitely needs to be talked about. I, I'm with you there.
Where are we responsible for posting it? Cause you don't want someone to come back and go, well, that particular event wasn't posted there. That's why you wanna list three, maybe, three, three places? This is where we are, this is where we will tell you, we will absolutely post it. If it gets posted elsewhere, great, but these are the official channels of the township. The official channels are through Facebook, Twitter, and our website. Maybe that's it.
And Jennifer's the one that does the posting, so they would have that information where she's sending things.
Right, and maybe it's our official Facebook account posts it. The township's Facebook account posts it just on our Facebook account. If Jennifer wants to share it personally, that's fine, but, you know, but the, the township will post it formally on our, on our Facebook page.
And, and I honestly would prefer something that's not more than a couple of pages, otherwise it, it just gets lost, so.
Right. I'm willing to work with Mr. Ains and Jennifer on it.
So am I. Cause I provided two examples to them. Um, they're easily to be copied. They were very easy to, uh, look at. And yes, not a lot of municipalities do have communication plans, but I think that uh, we're getting to a time when it's very vital that we have something like that in place instead of always shooting from the hip.
Right, but one of them was like thirty pages long, if I recall.
One was a county, one was a county, one was a municipal. It wasn't, it was a, an, an, another state.
Oh, really? Okay.
Right, no, I, I think I'm, I'm with, that, that's good because I do think we wanna keep it simple. We wanna cover all aspects. I certainly don't want a thirty-page communication plan. And, yes, exactly, and, you know, it will be added to as, you know, things change and as we become more knowledgeable and do some misses. But I do wanna keep it, um, complete yet simple.
I, I will, and I just add the one thing that went, the one, um, attachment that, uh, Ms. Otto did send was a toolbox for creating the communication plan. And that first page was the all best information of everything that we got sent, so I think that's a good guideline.
Yep, I agree.
And I can share.
Okay, any other discussion? If there's not, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Um, Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay.
I have a question, I have a question, Mr. Supervisor.
Sure.
Is, I actually have two questions. So do we need any motion to have the people on the committee or is that identified it's going to be?
No.
You're, okay. And then my next question is, one of the whole topic about this was to talk about the town hall for, um, North Village.
That's our next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I, I missed that. Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is providing direction, is, is to provide direction to Parks and Recreation in regards to holding a town hall meeting on regarding the North Village Park.
Thank you.
Yep, so, um, uh, Ms. Chick had submitted this in regards to the town hall. I really feel that with the Parks and Recreation having gone through, uh, the park, um, and rec master plan. Uh, and getting ready to develop a design plan for the park that it really is best suited for them to have this conversation. Um, we have a Parks and Recreation Committee for a reason. And, and they're the ones that are putting this, you know, the, the real blood, sweat, and tears into these plans. And then, uh, they'll be, you know, bringing back to us a plan. So, um, what I would like to do is for us to hash out what this is going, what, what is the scope of this? So that we can give Parks and Rec clear direction on what they should be bringing back to us in regards to this. So, um.
Uh, I saw you're saying Parks and Rec should have the town hall meeting, that it wouldn't be the board that would have it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, only because they're the ones that have been putting all this work in and they're the ones that are doing the design that really it, that them, us holding it doesn't, I mean, really, we're, we're, we're not the people that are doing that every day. I mean, Ms. Otto's going to because she's on the Parks and Rec, so she's gonna be involved in that. And I know she's very intensely involved in the master plan. I do understand that. So I, I would really like to see them, uh, move forward with this. And I think they've done quite a few of these already. I don't know if, it, I, I, I can't speak for Parks and Rec. I haven't been on Parks and Rec. Um, I'm not sure if Ms. Otto has any insight into that being new on Parks and Rec, but.
So we're going to establish the purpose and the goals of the parks or the town hall? I mean, the scope of the town hall meeting, I should say.
I, I would say we, what we owe Parks and Rec is what, what, what are we looking for? Anytime we refer something to these committees or, or, um, boards, you know, I, I think it's important that we kind of try to establish, uh, expected deadlines and what we're looking for. Uh, you know, not necessarily what the end result, you know, but we would like a report back you know, within ninety days, or we would like some, something like that when it's appropriate. And, you know, I, I think us collectively have to make that determination. Um, you know, I, I, but I would say that, um, they've, they've gathered a lot of data. I know they did a lot of, uh, you know, and, and again, in COVID, it's a little different. So they did their, their data gathering and Natalie was a part of that data gathering uh, this most recent time. And, uh, you know, I know she had better results there than we've had at previous uh, town halls as far as the number of participants. Um, but again, it, it, it is limited and we are challenged by COVID, but, um, I mean, would, would it be reasonable to ask Parks and Rec to, uh, lay out for us their process that they're gonna go through with the design? Just so we know and communicate it back to us?
So you're asking the Parks and Rec to design the park or taking options for things that they want there? Because I thought that we were going to be looking into hiring a park designer.
Well, they're gonna hire, yeah, they need to do, they need to work with a park designer, but they're gonna lead that charge, I would think. Ms. Otto, is that correct in your thoughts as well?
Well, it would have to be the township board that directs the park on what they want us to do. So if you ask us to look at, um, look, if you want the Parks and Rec Board to, um, to look into getting bids on designers or seeking a designer, we can always bring it back to the board for final approval. It isn't anything that we are doing going ahead on our own. The same draft of the park, the park, we could come up with several drafts of the park after we hire a designer and then bring it to the board and the board can make a decision.
I, I like the idea of Parks Designer because they are experts in the field. They look at the topography of the property. They have done it before. They know what will fit where.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, I would, I.
But that direction would have to come from the board to tell the township, to tell. You want them to do.
I'd like to make a motion that the township board direct Parks and Recreation to, uh, put out a bid for designers of park properties and, uh.
Park designer?
Park designers, I guess that's, our landscape architects that, that do parks. There we go, landscape architects that do parks. Um, and, uh, bring back a proposal to the township board. Is there support? Then I'll go to Mr.
I got a question here.
Hang on, Mr. Moko. There's a motion on the floor and supported by Zelenak. Mr. Moko?
No.
No, you don't.
What?
No, go ahead.
Well, I can, I can ask my question now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Um, aren't we putting the cart before the horse again here with getting designs on a park at North Village? Before we, uh, we're put our RFP out for the, for, uh, development on it? And then we're gonna design a park before we get development or, I thought they worked hand to hand.
We made a decision at the last board meeting that the park was to be ten to twelve acres.
It's two separate.
Acres, we, we didn't design the shape or anything like that. I mean, twelve acres could be ten feet wide and a mile long or.
There's, there's hundreds of hours of work that has went into this, though. We've already went through that whole process through the township already. On previous occasions. We have. There is.
All right.
And yes, Ms. Zelenak and then Ms. Manley.
All right, I think, um, Mr. Moko brings up the point is. Um, we have made the decision from, you know, minimum of ten going to twelve acres. And throughout this, and maybe some of the new board members don't know, we have made the decision, the prior board, to continue to discuss with LaVonia Builders. Who made their first, um, or who we decided to work with at the last board. So there are two items that have already, you know, happened. And I think that's overall my concern is we have, you know, obviously, how do we let the public know? That this is the direction the board has taken on such an important piece of property within the township. That the residents obviously own. And I think that just highlights the reason for the town hall meeting is to say. This is the direction we're going. Ten to twelve acres, we're still negotiating with LaVonia Builders. So that's the communication I think needs to happen to the public. And I'm not sure how to make that happen. And I mean, I appreciate that, um. The Parks and Rec to have the meeting, but they might get a lot of disgruntled people because they're really mad at maybe the, um, township board, but. So that's my thing is how do we communicate? This is the direction the board has chosen to go and we're going forward and now we want you to participate. Or we're asking for permission.
The board even went further than that. The board directed. The township manager and the attorney to negotiate a sale.
Right.
With LaVonia Builders. They, they voted a, a sale to them. So it's gone even further. It just, that hasn't happened. Ms. Manley?
So. We're talking about. Having Parks and Rec do this. What happened to the town hall? Are we having a town hall? Should be joint with the Parks and Rec and the board because the board will be the ones making the decisions. So I.
That's a good idea.
Will they?
Joint.
Will they be? I, 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 I guess I, I asked that question because. You know, it, the question is who's doing the heavy lifting? And to have the, you know, that's a sincere question.
We want people input before we're asking them to do something.
We would def, well, we've had a lot of their input, an awful lot of it. And a matter, a matter of fact, the Parks and Rec just went through getting a whole lot of it.
I know. Is that enough for us?
What is enough? What is enough?
Right.
Ms. Otto and then Ms. Chick.
Okay, so in the, if you go out for a DNR grant. One of the requirements is that you do have to have a public meeting. Or input. So I would recommend that a, a park designer comes first. And then you have that meeting. If you want to call it a town hall, I don't care what you want to call it, but it has to be a public meeting where people have a voice. At that point, you can explain what is going on. I think we have enough information by that time. That we would know everything that's going on. We would, at least we wouldn't have a draft of the. The park available, but at least you'd have the designer there that if people give input, he's hearing it. He's listening, he's hearing it and, uh, and can provide some feedback. Because there are some things that is going to fit in that area and there's some things that are not going to fit in that area. So if somebody wants another baseball diamond or a tennis court or, uh, you know, um. You, you know, or a, uh. Uh, an enclosed, uh, hundred by hundred building that may not go there.
Right. Thank, okay, Ms. Chick.
So that goes back to my original question is we have to define the scope or the reason for the town hall. If we've already decided that we're going to do development on this half and then park on the other half, then the reason for the meeting with. Parks and Rec with the community is tell us what your ideas are for the park. Yes?
No, they've done that. They've done that dozen, I'm, I would almost say dozens of times.
What's the town hall for?
That's a great question.
Okay.
I don't know because it, it. That's a great question. I don't know. I didn't know what it was for a year ago when it was going to happen because we'd already had that.
We did, we did. And then we said we'd have another one.
But there was nothing to be gained from it. Yes, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so what, what I'm taking from most of this is two separate issues. We need a park designer. Um, which I personally think we should, we should at least, we should have Parks and Rec handle finding maybe a couple suitable park designers. Um, move forward with that and just bring us a list, get our input.
Recommendation or something, yeah.
Yeah, um, maybe, maybe like three people, uh, three different park designers we can look into. Um, I, I obviously don't think we should just have one because then that limits our options, that limits our choices as well. Um. Uh, maybe even a, maybe even a plan of what, what they, what they, maybe a compilation, again. Red sheet kind of person, what, what the public wants, some of the top things they've heard about the park, um, what Parks and Rec recommends would. Be what they want, um, what, what they, what they think is feasible moving forward and for us to look at that, um. I'm, and then we have the town hall, which unless that relates specifically to grants, I'd not really seeing a purpose for. Because of how much data's been garnered already. Um, if we've already had all that public input. I mean, I, I really doubt we're going to get much more feedback and it's just going to delay things.
Right, I, 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 I mean, I agree, but so I think we're in agreement with where we want to go with. Telling Parks and Rec right now, as far as the, um. The, uh, town hall, I think we'll keep that on the, on the docket for looking at. Once we get through some of this process, but Parks and Rec going forward with, uh. Putting out an RFP for a, uh, arc, landscape architect is, is logically the next step. Um, w- w- with that, uh, I will tell you the, a little bit of information. Uh, the township manager and, uh, and myself and, and a couple of board members. Did have a conversation with Danny from LaVonia Builders. He is still very interested. Um, uh. And, and, and a much scaled down development from where he originally was because of the designation. Um, of the park property and, uh. Yeah, I mean, he, he's very interested, very, very open to working with the township and, uh, will continue to, to do so. Uh, you know. That conversation had to happen prior to the ability of the board to direct any negotiations, but Ms. Chick?
Um, RFPs are expensive. Um, I think they go through either the planner or the, uh, our administration. Is that correct, Mr. Ains?
Yes, traditionally we would provide the support or we'd have a consultant. Uh, McKenna gets involved a lot because of the grant application. Uh, if you're going to utilize them in the planning both. And I did want to mention also, you're getting into the beginning of the budget time. And as part of the budget, you have a capital improvement plan and as part of that. I consult with the park and recreation plan. So, you know, these all kind of fit together, but you'll be making decisions. Between March and June as to where you're going to put some money next year. Those can always be amended. The capital improvement plan can be amended, but it's something to keep in mind as you're going forward that. Uh, you do need to incorporate that, uh, with the overall capital improvement plan for the township, which includes. The asset management plan for the treatment plant, which you just were involved in. So these all kind of come together as part of the overall budget.
Okay. We do still have a motion out on the table, but, um, you know, I, I, I believe Ms., Ms. Bond or someone from kind of would be a part of at least reviewing, uh, if Mr. Ains put together an RFP for. Able architect, uh. You know, if, Ms. Bond, would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, if I could just, um, comment on that really quick. It, it wouldn't be me. It would probably be Julie, um, Conneke or Paul Affens. Um, just because they, they deal with, you know, more of the, uh. The RF, RFP and RFQ questions. And actually Julie, uh, I think if you're on the call, did you want to comment on this as well? There she is. Yep.
Sure, Natalie. I, I can comment on that. So, uh, absolutely, we can be involved in helping review an RFP and even vet. Landscape architect partners. Um, I also do want to provide a, a little bit of clarity. On, you know, this whole process of engaging a landscape architect to design the park. Uh, typically speaking, you know, you have great concept plans in the North Village, uh. Plan, but that's, that's still at a pretty high level and there's a significant amount of work that happens translating that. Bigger picture vision, even though there are, you know, physical designs on the page in that plan into an actual park design. That a landscape architect can guide you through. And typically, as a best practice, that involves some public engagement. To further refine the programming and that's going to be in line with your North Village plan and with, uh. The Parks and Rec Master Plan, uh. But it's taking it to that next level of refinement towards, uh, conceptual design that you can go out and, uh. Use to secure grants to do the actual implementation.
Thanks, Julie. Yes, Ms. Chick?
Well, before you go, Julie, um, I, it came, that question actually came up at the, uh, planning commission meeting too. About the North Village Master Plan that it actually can be used as for the DNR grant, correct?
I think it can play some role in it. Um, I. I think my recommendation at this time would be to take it to that next phase where you have, uh, one concept for what you're hoping to do. Just because that North Village Plan puts forth, uh, I think three different options for how the site can be designed. And it doesn't really account for. Um, the development agreement that the township, uh, is trying to negotiate here with LaVonia Builders. So. Yes and no. My recommendation would be, uh, to, to do this next step of preliminary design, but there are certainly grants that I. I, I could see being applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Using that.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Julie. Uh, Jackie?
I know, I attended the, uh, DNR Grant Workshop, uh, last week. There are some grants. That you have to have all the. Uh, development and everything done. All that has to be done, signed, everything before you can even apply for a grant. So there are some grants that we can do, some grants, like she said, that we can't do. But that, the, some of the bigger grant, some of the grants that, that we could do may not even affect that area. So. Um, part of it is once we submit our, um, our master plan to DNR. Then that is the time that we can sit down with our representative at DNR and go through what is best for us. At this time with what we have.
Okay. All right, there is still a motion on the table. Ms. Zelenak?
Yeah, I was going to, uh, Mr. Supervisor was going to ask you, could you repeat that motion and recap where we are? Cause I'm, I'm a little confused at this.
Yeah, we, we went down into the weeds a little bit. So the motion was to, uh, uh, direct Parks and Recreation. I'll, I'll refine it now. To work with staff to put together an RFP for landscape architect. To help in putting forth a design concept for the park. They'll bring back to us recommendations.
Did you get support? I'll support if you didn't. Okay.
I think I, I think I supported, right?
That was a long time ago.
I was a long time ago, but I think I did. Okay.
You make a question?
Okay, so I just, may I have one question? Or you can, and we can take a vote on it.
Okay, Ms. Manley.
I was just so, okay, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Question for us, Lennar?
Well, I, my question is, so we're not really having a town hall meeting, correct? Not anytime in the near fut- future. Is that my understanding?
It's being left on the docket for potentially in the future. Yes, as we go through this process, but we're not.
Maybe, maybe when we have our budget or something, we could really emphasize. So again, my concern is people don't know. That we have decided it's going to be ten to twelve acres and. They may have forgotten that we are continuing to work with LaVonia Builders. So that's my only thought. So anyway, okay.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the future of seventy-five Barker Road. Um, now, a couple of things came to my attention prior to the meeting, like immediately prior to the meeting. We have a lot of information on seventy-five Barker here. Um, I ca, I came to the meeting prepared to make a motion. Um, and I'm going to continue to do that, although I have one caveat on that. Um, and I'm going to, let's see, before I do that, give me one second here. I will, uh, spare Lisa the, the, the struggle of keeping up with me on this and I will email her the motion if it. Indeed it goes forward. So my motion is to establish an ad hoc committee on seventy-five Barker Road with the following objectives in tandem. The first is to investigate the feasibility and costs of A, splitting the building from the parking. B, rehabbing the parking lot. C, connecting it to the main street properties that is being paved out by, uh. The Ritz, uh. By Matt Ritz, the, and the establishing of signs and, and, uh. Establishing a signage. Uh, two. To publish an open call for proposals and offers for just the building at seventy-five Barker. That proposals and offers should be submitted and received by sealed envelope by the township, no later than the close of business on February twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-one. And three, that the sub, that the committee established scoring criteria for the proposals or offers that includes. Uh, these few things. The proposed use, the timeframe for work to commence, the timeframe for work to be completed. The approximate renovation investment. Conceptual floor plans. Dollar amount being offered for the property. The location of the company or primary investor and the list of expected contractors and locations. I'm not expect, you know, one of the, uh, let me just continue. And then the final thing is. Uh, the committee will open and score these proposals and report it back to the Board of Trustees on their findings, no later than April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is that a motion?
I'll support.
Motion.
Yeah.
I'll support.
Did you put it in here? That's really, really long and a lot to remember.
I know, I drafted it over the last hour and I, I will, I will make, I, and I can reread it because I have it here. Ms. Zelenak, uh, supported. Uh, one thing I'll say is, is whoever the subcommittee is that, that works on this. The intent is not to have these people spending tens of thousands of dollars or doing tons of architectural drawings. They'd have to do all that before the planning commission.
Okay.
Really looking for the creativity to come out. Um, the one thing I was made aware of and I, I'll say this is a memo. From March sixth, twenty nineteen from the Planning Commission Chairman that was sent to the Board of Trustees. That never made it to the Board of Trustees in your packet. That was from March sixth of twenty nineteen. And it, what it did is it called attention to the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. And really wanted, uh, you to focus on, and I mean, I dug through countless minutes. And board packets, um, but. In the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, which is now part of our master plan, there were three goals that it identified for. That downtown area and, and you know, I, those three things are in our alley parallel to Main Street. Fill in buildings along Barker and parking lots preferably for public parking.
Okay.
So on those three things, you know. The other option that could be considered is the. the other option that could be considered is the demolition of 75 Barker and the building of linear, a linear building on the northmost property line of 75 Barker. I didn't include that in my motion, but you know, the, I think the subcommittee or the ad hoc committee could look at that. Cause that was a discussion item that was talked about in multiple Planning Commission meetings back then. And it fits in with the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, uh, design framework. It really does. Um, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, you know, my motion is as it stands, but certainly if, uh, the, uh, proposals or the offer, the, uh, opening call for proposals was to include that as an option, where the demolition of 75 Barker was to take place and a linear building was to be put in place closer to the street, right up on the sidewalk. I mean, you know, I'd like to see people get creative. If there's really a desire for this parcel of property to develop either 75 Barker or that linear building, we need to hear from the public. And if not, the board needs to consider taking action. And whether that is demolishing it and creating a bigger parking area or something else. Mr. Nelson?
Could I, 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 I'm going to move to amend the motion and just add on to that last bit, um, cost of demolition. Uh, then, uh, feasibility of demolition and cost of potential demolition.
Yeah, I think.
It's actually in there.
In here.
Oh, it was in there?
It's buried. It's buried in here, but it's in here. There's, there's a lot of data. I, I, I know you guys were given a, a huge packet and I apologize for that. So, um, I do know it's in here. I don't know if Mr. Ains recalls what that number was off the top of his head.
I think it was forty.
Forty-three and fifty.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was fifty.
Fifty thousand dollars. Yeah. So, I mean, my thought would be if someone comes forward and wants to do a linear building against the north of the property, their proposal needs to include paying for the demolition of 75 Barker. That, that, that would be my thought. Uh, Mr. Nelson?
Um, honestly, at this point, um, I was talking, I was talking about this a few days ago. Um, I, I kind of just want this property off our hands. It's been a liability for the township for far too long.
No kidding.
We've had to upkeep it. If we just have to, e- even if we do have to demolish it and just sell the property as is and take a little bit of a hit on it, in the long run, the upkeep costs will be out of our hair. We will not have to maintain that land. It will not be on our hands anymore. I think, I think that's really should be the board's goal at the moment. Getting this out of our hands so that it never comes back and it's never a sore spot. It's never an issue for the board moving forward. Yeah.
Our struggle with that is, uh, we have Whitmore Lake, that Whitmore Lake, uh, Downtown Overlay District, WLDDD. That Overlay District says, no business in downtown has to have parking. None. You require zero parking. So if you're going to require zero parking, you have to provide parking as, as, as a municipal entity. Uh, you, you can't not, especially if you want things to, to grow in there. I, I kind of see this as a strategic parcel now, only because we are having the development come into downtown. We do have the individuals that are making investments and running their parking all the way up to the property line of this par- parcel of property. And we haven't had further discussions with them about the cost of connecting that entirely. Cause we have a little bit of an apron of grass between us. We don't know what the cost of upkeeping that, uh, is. Uh, it's, it's a tough thing. I mean, I, I would like to see this ad hoc committee and, and, uh, really dig into these issues. I understand it's an aggressive timeframe, but I would really like to see it. Mr. Nelson?
Um, in, in addition to that, I mean, then po- potentially looking into as, as you said in the motion, um, I did catch that and I did read through all this. Um, splitting the property might be more feasible, but even if we have to demolish the building and get that, I, I am specifically folk stuck on the land. The parking, we, we probably would have to provide. I, I don't see us just selling a parking lot. Oh, I, so, um, I, I want the land off our hair though. As that building has just been a liability for far too long. We, if we're going to have growth, we don't need this old, just nearly destroyed building on our hands and continuing to be on our hands. And we just keep having problems with it. It, I, I would do anything it takes to get that out of here. Um, unless, unless someone from the public came forward and made sure, uh, and expressed that interest in that property and expressed interest in developing that.
And Mr. Ains can address that, yes, there have been multiple parties that have been interested in that, in that building. And he's walked, I know he's walked them through them. Um, I've not spoken to those folks, uh, in, in any recent time, but I know there are multiple parties. Is that correct, Mr. Ains? And then we'll go to.
Yes, I've taken five different ones through since it was announced that the deal fell through with, uh, Mr. Munger.
But I think it's important, this will def- this will let people know what we're doing. Ms. Chick, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just want to speak to Mr. Nelson's comments. It's been a struggle for this township for many years to decide what to do with that property. And part of the struggle was there was a big public pushback not to demolish it. They, the Kiwanis wanted it, other people wanted it because it's been there forever. It's historical, but it's not doing anything. It's not helping the township at all. So we really need to make a decision finally, one way or another, what to do with it and carry that out. Um, and I did want to comment on your, uh, comment, Mr. Dignan, as well about Mr. Roman's letter. We were very upset that his letter did not make it into the pack. It got distributed via email, but it never made it into the public view. But yeah, yep.
Okay.
And it never got responded to by the board either. So.
No.
And, yes, Ms. Zelenak?
So my comment is, I, and the proposals, and maybe you need to add this to the motion. They need to, you know, consider following the Downtown Strategic Plan. And in my opinion, if we don't get a very, you know, oh, an excellent, outstanding proposal, I'm inclined to keep the property for public parking to help the businesses that do exist and future businesses, and then most likely tear down the building. But I really want the proposals to be very good. Otherwise, I would say that we would probably be best to keep the parking for all of it. For future purposes. That's, that's in my opinion. So I do hope people take into consideration when they come forward with the proposal, the Downtown Strategic Plan.
Right. And obviously if there was a linear building on that property, the slot split would go east to west. Wouldn't go north to, north to south. Cause you know, all that. Yeah. Mr. Ains, go ahead.
The first, as far as the amount of information we gave you, I did get, uh, this down to a small amount. I've got about two and a half feet worth of files on 75 Barker. So if the board wants all that at some point, be happy to give it to you.
You can always have a party. Yeah, there's lots there to read.
On a more serious basis, if you look at the, uh, architect's study of the building from a group called Dangerous Architects, which was dated in October of 218. Uh, on his last page of notes, just before the two demolition proposals that were included, uh, he comments that it would cost at least forty thousand or more to take it down. So that fits in line with the two demolition proposals. But he did look at that concept of a linear building being along Barker Road. And for the same square footage is in the fire station building. He said it would cost you about 1.3 million dollars to build a new one. So that's, he was saying basically the building is structurally sound. Its appearance is not good. A lot of the features are not good. But if you get in there, it's actually a very sturdy structure, at least the fire hall part of it. So just something else to reflect on.
Okay. Any other comments or can we call the motion? All right. Uh, would anyone like the motion read again?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is to establish an ad hoc committee on 75 Barker Road with the following objectives in tandem. Investigate the feasibility and costs of A, splitting the building from the, from the parking, B, rehabbing the parking lot, uh, and connecting it to the main street properties and establishing signage. Two, publish an open call for proposal slash offers for just the building at 75 Barker Road. Proposals and offers should be submitted and received in a sealed envelope by the township, no later than the close of business on February 25th, 2021. Three, establish a scoring criteria for proposals or offers that includes the proposed use, the timeframe to commence work, the timeframe to complete work, approximate renovation investment, the conceptual floor plan or plans, the dollar amount being offered for the property, the location of the company or primary investor and the list of expected contractors in their locations. And then finally, uh, four, open, the, the, the ad hoc committee would open and score the proposals and report back to the Board of Trustees on their findings, no later than April 13th, 2021. Okay. Ms. Manley, would you like to call the roll?
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Moko? I think Nate's frozen. Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
And I don't see Nate anymore.
Let me see if he's bounced out into the audience or if he's.
It looked like he was frozen.
He was frozen.
Oh, he was six, zero vote.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, he's out. All right. So moving on, the next item on the agenda is, uh, Ms. Bilal is here with us, I believe. Did you hear Stacy? Yeah. Yeah, Nate says, hang on. Internet dropped, I think. I vote yes. I just lost my internet. There he is.
Ken, can, before we go on to the next one, did, did we identify who was going to be on that committee?
Uh, we did not. I, so, um, I would like to be on that committee. Would, yes, Ms. Zelenak?
As, I would like to as well. As I would like to be too, please.
One more seat.
I'd be glad.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead. Nate, Ken, do you want any members of the public to be part of it as well or no?
I think right now, uh, we're just going to keep it as an ad hoc committee of the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Moko? All right. So.
Sounds good.
So Dignan, Zelenak and Moko. And, uh, obviously, uh, Mr. Ains will be on that as well. All right. Next item, Ms. Bilal, appreciate you hanging in there with us.
Of course.
We've got a busy meeting here. So, um, as you all know, the PTO time has been hanging out there, uh, for, for a while now. And, uh, I, with that, we've gotten a lot of information that's come back and forth. I've asked her to be here for questions, but I do want to present the board with a motion on PTO time that, uh, any PTO that is, uh, in excess of two years be taken by the end of this fiscal year or it'll be surrendered.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Zelenak. Ms. Otto?
Are we specific as to what type of employees? We have union employees, we have contracted employees?
Any, anyone in excess of 24 months must take it by June 30th.
Does that cover the union contracts?
Uh, not the, not the, uh, that has nothing to do with what the union contracts. They're, they're governed by a different animal.
I think that's where Ms. Otto was going with it.
This is all township employees that are not covered by a.
I would call, then I would be specific and say non-union.
Oh, I'll, I'll accept that friendly motion.
Okay. So.
Amendment.
Any PTO, any PTO time not taken by, uh, individuals not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, by the end of the fiscal year, uh, will surrender any time in excess of 24 months.
Yeah, I think it listed the employees that would impact in the, in the information.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the one comment I do, I may, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Is first of all, these numbers are seven months old.
Yes.
So it would have been useful to have the most recent numbers for this data. Cause I'm sure things have changed.
And I am sure that they have been accumulating.
Some may, some may have not. So.
As part of my motion, ah, dang it, part of my.
But it's, it, go ahead.
I wanted to also ask that, uh, Mr. Ains draft a memo to each of the employees that are in excess and that that memo be signed and made part of their personnel record.
Can we, I, may I make a, can we have that as a sec- a second motion?
Sure.
And just, please, I mean.
Can I ask Ms. Bilal to, to, if there's any concerns with any of that?
Um, no, I think it is a good idea to comply with, uh, as I've stated, with your written policy. It is advisable to notify people in writing of the amount and what the change is going to be. I think it is also advisable to make a change pursuant to, or I suppose, make a change in compliance with your policy, to comply with the policy pursuant to a board vote.
Okay. All right. So there is a motion that's been made.
Can you read back the motion, Mr. Supervisor?
Yep. Make a motion that, uh, any employees that are not, that are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, be instructed to take their PTO time prior to the end of this fiscal year, which for clarification is June 30th of 2021, in excess of 24 months, or the time will be surrendered.
Thank you. I still support.
Thanks. Any other discussion on that motion? Yes, Ms. Otto?
And you did say that you wanted each employee to sign off that they, uh, read it and agreed to it?
I'm going to make a separate motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I want to talk, say one thing. And I'm, I'm going to be very polite about this. Um, I read, uh, attorney, uh, Bill's, uh, comments and, uh, recommendations. The board had made a directive twice in regards to this, back in September of 2020 and October of 2020. We have the minutes. And neither time was this followed. So the board was, uh, was going according to what the provisions in the employee handbook was written in regards to PTO time. We did make that directive and neither time was these followed. So I just wanted that to be very clear.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Ms. Zelenak?
So to, um, add on to Mr., uh, Ms. Otto's comment, you know, we do have people in charge and other than them, if they're not going to do the job, then it seems like eventually we might have to, um, approve time cards. I mean, if I'm, if the board's ultimately responsible and we have people in place to carry out that responsibility and it's not being done, then, you know, eventually I can see time cards coming.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak.
That's just my comment.
And then Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on that. We were actually surprised to see this back on the agenda because we had already gone through this a couple of times. So I, I'm glad we're going to vote on it again, but it shouldn't come back again.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Mr. Ains?
We fully under-
We fully understood what the board's direction was. What we were trying to clarify is for those that were over as of last July, did you want to go backwards and take it away or allow them to go forward to the next fiscal year in June? That's basically what we were trying to clarify and that's why I asked Ms. for, for her opinion, which I understood it to mean that if they already had it, they had earned it and therefore it should be given an opportunity to use up by this July. That's the only thing I was doing. We're not tired of hearing. We understand the board said no more than two years, period. We're just trying to figure out how you wanted that impact going backwards or forwards with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. I think we're clarifying that right now. That come June 30th, we've got more than 24, more, more than two years, it's, it's going to be surrendered. All right. Any other comments or Ms. Manley, can you call the roll, please?
Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick.
Yes.
Moco.
Yes.
Seven, zero.
I'll make a motion to instruct Mr. Ains to draft a memo to each employee that is expected to have excess of 24 months of PTO, instructing them that they have till June 30th to take that time. And if they do not take it, they will lose it. I would ask that a copy of that memo be signed by the employee and placed in their personnel records.
Support.
Okay, it's a motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Ms. Manley?
Can we put a timeframe on when we want that done and can we get copies of it?
Sure.
Weeks.
Yeah.
By the next meeting.
Yep. Any question left motion?
What's that date?
The next board meeting is on February.
12.
12.
9th. 9th.
February 9th.
9th.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any other questions? Any other comments? Hearing done. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Manley, yes. Chick.
Yes.
Moco.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Okay. Very much. Next item on the agenda is comp time. I'd like to make a motion to remand this back to the Personnel Committee to review and make recommendations back to the board.
In regards to what?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Comp time. So I will support, but I do have a comment.
Okay. Motion by Dignan, support by Otto. Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
So the board did back in September 8th, 2020 meeting have made a decision on the comp time. There was, it didn't appear though that a motion was passed. But this would be easy to go back, review, and then give it back to the board for the next meeting.
Yes, Ms. Zelenak.
So again, the numbers are, you know, seven months old, but looking at them, I think what, there's only one employee at that point in time, and I'm not sure it's still a concern, that's over the 150 hours, correct? So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's a concern. And I guess my other question to Ms. Bilal is, do we have to have anything in writing by the employees that they understand that they can't go over 150 hours just like we do on the PTO time? I'm not sure on that one.
Have to pay them, don't we?
All of the comp time that is taken in lieu of overtime should be agreed to by the employee in advance of the time being taken.
In writing.
Or the time accumulating. So every employee to whom comp time applies should have a written document in their file stating that they agree to comp time and move overtime at the overtime rate of one and a half hours. And all the other provisions should be spelled out at that point as well.
Mr. Ains and then Ms. Otto.
There's actually two employees. I got a clarification on that today. The building zoning planning one is the one that's fairly simple and you had told us to start her working on time and a half and not comp time. I was just asking about being questioned whether she gets paid for the past comp time and my understanding from the labor attorney is that would be the appropriate thing to do. When I wrote the memo the other day, I had thought there was another one, which is community center director, but then when I got the information from the controller, it was zero for her. But I followed up today. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to before. But she was not aware of having it been zeroed out. And in fact, she has several hundred hours of comp time. And when I talked to the controller, she said it had gone to zero by the auditors as a liability because of the issue with the department head having comp time. But that she was not in favor of that. She felt like the employee should be compensated for the time and take it off the books. So I apologize for not having complete information when I sent out the packet.
But she is a salaried employee with supervision over other employees at times and is not eligible for overtime or comp time.
Exactly.
At all. She's not eligible, period. She's, she's. She's a department head.
I guess I would be looking, we might have to ask our labor attorney, she is a department head, so maybe it's, I don't know if she wants to send us a memo, but I didn't realize department heads when they accumulate.
Okay. Well, that, that's why I wanted to.
I think, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, so. But so basically, all right, do we have, you have remanded it back to the Personnel Committee? That's the motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor, yes.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to make one, I'm going to make one more comment, that back in September 8th of 2020, Mary Bird did come up in the conversation and we did at that time state that she did not want to be put under comp time, that she wanted to be put under overtime and that she was supposed to be paid. So I am, again, very surprised that this has come up.
Right. I would, I would also ask that on that note, that if she has a meeting on a, on a Wednesday, that she come in at noon on a Thursday. But, you know, to avoid that as much as possible. Mr. Ains?
I did instruct Mary at that point to charge it to overtime. Anything excess, it's the past amount that she had that I'm asking for clarification if we can pay that off at this time.
Okay.
All right. I guess with my motion, we're sending it back to Personnel Committee. They would come forth with recommendation to the board after the meet on, on doing that. I'm not prepared to make any motion in that regard today.
Right. Do we need a friendly amendment as about, when do you want it to come back? Is it the next meeting or the second, the second meeting?
I, as far, once the, once the Personnel Committee has a chance to meet, so I don't know what their schedule is, but I would assume it, see it back in the next, next month sometime.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Any other comments? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Manley, yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Moco.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Seven, zero.
While, thank you for your time this evening. And we will be.
All right, I will leave the meeting now. Thank you.
All right.
Great to see all of you.
Nice to see you.
Good night.
Good night. All right, so next item on the agenda is the adoption of the Parks and Rec master plan.
Well, I guess I'll move to adopt the master plan as is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Nelson, supported by Moco. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Zelenak and then Ms. Chick.
So I, I sent some comments today to Ms. Otto.
Yes, I get.
And so I'm, I don't know if there's any in particular that we would like to discuss or if they will, some of it is like Northfield Human Services, that's, it needs to be Northfields and not just Northfield. So that's in there and then.
Northfields with a N.
Yes, with past F S.
Okay.
And then another one is that I had like on the, and so you'll make those changes, like some of the grammatic and then looking at I think on page, oh, nine or something, sometimes it's Township Board where it's both, it's capitalized Township and Board is capitalized and then sometimes Township isn't and Board is, or Township is and Board isn't. So I just think there needs to be consistency in the capitalization.
We did have.
Okay, so that's, but then I think, you know, again, that's on my comments. I mean, I think you could probably look and see if there are those. I did have like one was when you get to the community park and it used to be page 20, it says, it says it's 10 to 12 square miles.
Oh.
And it was, everything else says 10 to 12, you know, everything else is in acres.
Acres.
I don't know if I have it up, so.
Yep, it does say square miles.
It's a big park.
I mean, I don't think that's. So.
Think it's bigger than the land we own.
So, all right, so that was, and then I thought the library pavilion, it says it's 1.6 acres. I, I would think maybe the whole library property is. And then looking at the seven mile road preserve, we don't have any like acres, but in the document, what page is that? That's around page 22.
Yeah, it does say that about, there's about 63 acres there.
So, yeah, Mike thought was maybe put it like you did with all the other ones, just put area in approximately 63 acres as opposed to just leaving it in the text.
Okay.
And then I just was on like page 29 in the table under miscellaneous, I was wondering if you wanted to include bathrooms or if that was necessary or not.
Where's, which one was that?
That was like, you know, that in the chart on 20, I think page 29 under, you know, you don't, you have like miscellaneous banquet, exercise programs, dog park. I was just wondering, you mentioned bathrooms, I think in the goals, and I was wondering if that should be in that chart at all. It should. It was just a comment. Let's see here, what else? I was just on, I think it's now page 25 under regional recreation. You do mention the Lakeland Trail, but I was wondering if it shouldn't be added as a amenity that already exists like in other communities?
You're right. Looked through this and we did not mention the Mike Levine State Trail from Hamburg. And that's very key because that's the one that we want to connect to.
Yeah, you, yeah, so I was wondering about that. And then going, I think on table six, which is page 27, kind of skipping around on kind of what I think are more content issues than, or questions. You go beach and then under the MDNRs, it says 50 square feet, but we don't have any, so I'm taking the dash means zero.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. All right, and then, and then I go up one page, or actually on that same page and you get to Greenway Trails and it says variable. And so we don't have any trails, but it can be variable. Is that my understanding then?
According to the reason why it's put that way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Natalie, is because there's a lot of different types of requirements for it. So instead of making the list of requirements, it could be probably more than one or two. Like for beach, really the, the one thing is this was two bullets put together and the same for multi-purpose athletic field, it was two bullets put together.
Okay.
For variable, it may have had more than two bullets, may have had like three or four or five bullets and it would be hard to put all that in there. That's why we put variable.
Okay, all right, I mean, that's. And then I, I know I still, I've talked about this before, but like on page five and talking about the ESRI, I guess I'm still struggling. What is the purpose of having that in the Parks Plan?
And I'll leave that to Natalie.
So the ESRI for the Tapestry Segmentation Qualifications and Groups, that is to give people and to the community and to the commissioners and the township administration an idea of what type of community that Northfield is in order to best serve them through recreation. And what that does is, is just provides background info on who lives here, what do they like to do for fun? You know, as far as age, demographics, socioeconomic status, jobs and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And then I think, let's see here, I have, this one's kind of like the administrative structure. We have the chart and then on page nine, I was just thinking it should follow like Board of Trustees and then it should be DDA Development and Township Manager to go along with your chart left to right. It's picky, so you can do what you want with that one.
And I also just wanted to point out, if I can jump in really quick, that when you guys do the motion, you're able to put in there that you can adopt it with additional comments.
Sure.
If there's, if there's any, you know, wording issues or grammatical errors or things that we might want to change, that can, and it just needs to be done, you know.
So we need to slightly, sorry. So we need to slightly do a friendly amendment with changes as discussed or something.
Mr. Nelson, are you okay with that change to your motion?
Yes.
And Mr. Moco with the support?
Yes, I still support.
Okay, all right, so, and I should have started out, I know there was a tight timeframe and I know people worked very hard on this and I know our board rep, Ms. Otto, did, and I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this to get us to this point. And I mean, overall, I think, you know, these are minor that I have raised and I appreciate us getting to this point to have a very well-written document. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak, Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Otto.
Yeah, I don't have any changes. Actually, Jackie and, and I and Natalie and Paul went page by page about a week or so ago and made the changes that we were looking at, but I, I just wanted to say that I'm going to express the same concern that the Planning Commission expressed when we had the presentation is that it's a little uncomfortable for me anyway to approve a document that is still going through changes. So I'm, I'm okay with it, but I just, and I appreciate the amendment that, you know, going through changes, as long as those changes aren't substantive and they're not changing. as long as those changes aren't substantive and they're not changing anything that does not comply with either the Northfield's master plan or the Township master plan or any kind of drastic change, because it's really unusual for us as a board because we're so nitpicky about making sure that we have all the information before we actually take a vote on anything that it's complete. And this is not a complete document if we're going to still be making changes. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Ms. Otto?
So I do want to recognize the others that were on the subcommittee that really participated. They did a lot of this before I even got on the board. Ton was the representative prior, she was on that subcommittee, so was Jennifer Delisle. Cece was on there and so was Lee, and I wanted to recognize them for all their hard work on this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Absolutely, those folks are doing heavy lifting and it's a big part of getting things done and moving things forward. So I appreciate all of their work as well as Natalie, I appreciate your help in this process. So anyone else have any comments? If not, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
I think that was everybody. Seven zero.
All right. All right, thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, trustees. Good night.
Yep. All right, next item on the agenda is a request from Lee Maltbush to continue farming at station number two.
So I'll make a motion to continually seeing the farmland at fire station number two with, from Mr. Lee Maltbush.
I'll support.
Okay, there's a motion by Chick, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion?
My, I just had a question. How many acres is that? Just out of curiosity.
It is.
Little.
Yeah, very little.
From the picture in the packet, I couldn't tell much. I just wondered, but.
Oh, there it is. It's eight acres.
Yeah, I thought it was over seven.
Yeah, it's eight acres. Might be a little less than that farming now that the tower's out there, but.
Yeah, the tower is out there, so I think it is less than eight.
Yeah, but I think that was only like an eighth of an acre or a fifth of an acre that the tower.
Right.
Yeah.
The road, but. All right, there's a motion and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Nelson?
I'm commuted, yes.
Yes.
That's okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is receiving the Planning Commission's annual report, which is in your packet. And really it's just receiving that. I don't know if you guys wanted Julie to run down it at all, but she is with us here. If anyone's got any questions on it.
I think the board has seen.
Mr. Supervisor, did you, did you make a motion?
I did not make a motion. Do we have to accept it?
It's just receiving it. I don't think.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
You don't think we need a motion to receive it?
No.
No. I'd like to, well, maybe Julie would like to answer that we are going to be discussing the code enforcement zoning ordinance amendment coming up on Wednesday, which we're very anxious to get done in the development packet. We're very close to getting that as well. Correct, Ms. Conneke?
Correct, and I noticed that the proposed work plan was separate from the annual planning report on the agenda, so I'm sure we can discuss those in more detail coming up. But this item is really just the first half of that report that you received from me, which is the state required submission of planning activities from the Planning Commission to the governing body that's prepared each year.
Ms. Otto?
So the one thing that I noticed in here was the DDA and the TIF plan. And Janet, you're going to probably have to help me on this. At one time, I remember that one of our attorneys came, I think it was Paul Burns that came and said that our current TIF plan has to be redone. It's like in a barbell shape. And, and it's, I'm going to say a word, but I don't want to say it, that it's not appropriate.
I'm working on that as we speak with the assessor and DDA.
It's not contiguous, is my understanding.
Contiguous, yes.
Mr. Dignan is correct. In fact, we got this reported at our last Planning Commission meeting, that the DDA is working on getting that settled and straightened out.
Problem is the lawyers don't agree. The Michigan Economic Development, MEDC says it's legal. There's nothing wrong with the barbell. Barbell's perfectly legal and they have legal counsel to back it up.
Okay.
Problem is, is well, we're working on it. It's going to have to, we're going to have to turn off some erroneous properties and yeah, it's, now I know why it's been this way for so long is because it is a monumental task to get this.
Right, nobody wants to touch it.
No, and actually when it came to us, if I recall, this was back in my first term. First brought to us, and it hasn't been touched since.
No, and yeah, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it done. It's just going to be a little bit of a task. On the work plan, I was actually going to make a motion to postpone the work plan to a future board meeting.
I think it was already adopted by the board though, wasn't it?
Not by this board.
Oh, okay.
And I don't recall doing the, isn't, in the work plan, isn't there something about the assessing or the DDA? I don't recall approving that.
Yes, there is.
It is, so.
I don't recall us doing that.
So I'm going to make a motion to postpone the adoption of the work plan to our second meeting in February.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Zelena.
And you want to postpone it because of the DDA issue or what was the reason?
No. I want to postpone it because as we've spoken in the past, I want to investigate prior to adopting this. We're considering bringing forth a proposal to the board to look at hiring a internal
Yes.
building department official.
Correct.
And we still will obviously have a planning consultant. We have to have a planning consultant for bigger projects and stuff. But I'm just not prepared at this time to move forward with the work plan. That's all.
Are you asking the Planning Commission not to work on any of these things then by not adopting it or what is we doing here?
Well, that's a good question. It's a fair question. I guess what I would say is work on any current applications and applicants. I did now have a conversation with the chair of the Planning Commission to make sure that there was no, that this, that there wasn't anything that would be interfered with greatly by postponing this a little bit. So, I mean, I would say continue working with existing applicants and things moving forward. I know there's stuff going on still with that, but without the board approving the work plan, I'd be hesitant to go forward with other things.
Okay.
Specifically, Julie, that you are right in the midst of that, you can share with me that that is kind of critical to what you're doing?
Yes, I was, I was going to mention the development packet. I also wanted to just process this work plan a little bit for your peace of mind. This is part and parcel of the report of annual Planning Commission activities because it's kind of a best practice from the MEDC to look ahead to the next year as to what the Planning Commission's priorities are in line with all of the other guiding documents that the Planning Commission looks to to set those kind of long-term project goals. So this is not something that we necessarily expect you to adopt in one fell swoop. We separate out these things as suggested items for the board to tackle over, or for the board to direct the Planning Commission or the Planning and Zoning Building Department to tackle during the course of the year. You don't have to do this all part and parcel. You can do these authorizations individually as the need to complete these projects comes up and as it makes sense in, over the course of the calendar year and over the course of your longer-term budget planning. That said, there are two items that are ongoing right now for us that I think we would seek direction on. One is we have substantially done a draft update of the entire zoning ordinance and I know we're eager to start working with the subcommittee, the Planning Commission formed, to review those drafts. Separately from that is the code enforcement amendment that Trustee Chick mentioned. That will be coming back to the Planning Commission for discussion. So that's one type of work, but I would say the more pressing issue is the development packet. We initially scoped this a little bit less than what we had previously come to the board for and we are in need of kind of a phase two funding effort to carry this over the finish line as well as update all of your applications. That wasn't originally included in the, in the first scope of work. Two pressing issues and I would say everything else can certainly be postponed for consideration at a future date.
Okay, I'm willing to address one of those after, once this motion is considered that I have out there. Because we can obviously address these individually. So any more comments or questions on my motion?
No, I would just appreciate us addressing them individually because we are in the middle of two of them already, so.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Planning Commission and Canada to work together on the code enforcement zoning ordinance amendments as outlined in the proposed 2021 work plan.
Support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any questions on the motion? Yes, Ms. Zelena?
And the cost to do that? Did I miss that?
There is not a cost outlined on that particular line item.
Okay, so do we know an estimated cost that it's going to cost to do that?
We're already, Ms., do you know Julie? Because we're already like at the end, near the end of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, we, we considered this, this particular amendment because it was small to be part of our, our normal hourly services that we provide to the township. It's not a cost above and beyond what you would normally be billed in a month from us.
May we add that to the amendment then? Or the, I'd like to make a friendly motion that it's what in the current retainer fee from the planners?
I'll add contained.
Would that be appropriate?
Retainer fee.
Perme?
I will add contained within the retainer fee to my, my motion.
Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Chick, she'll support it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Seven zero.
All right, I have some concerns about moving forward with the revised development packets right at the moment. You know, I just don't know that with, you know, if we go down the road of hiring an inside official to work with us on some planning and zoning stuff and start going forward, I don't want to do work that might not be beneficial or in line with what that individual might, you know, they're going to be the leader of planning and zoning in our community in working with the Planning Commission. Ms. Chick?
I will say that that particular item was utmost important, not only to the board to get the building department in that area streamlined in our development process streamlined. And the public was very, very involved in making sure that we actually started on this and I heard from it, people constantly that we needed to do something. And particularly people from the DDA, my understanding was the DDA was really, really hot on this one as well, which is why we started it. And even if we hire somebody, I don't know that there's going to be that much of a change in the process. We're talking about processes in applications and, and how the building department or the zoning department, how they deal with the applicants and inquiries. So I don't know that that is going to change with the different building official.
Okay, I haven't met a building official yet that hasn't wanted to change all that in years of working with them, but I respect that and understand that. You know.
But I mean.
Mrs.?
So, Ms. Chick, and based on understanding, there has been substantial work done on this? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
And that is Matt in a position to be released publicly? There, Julie, go ahead. Where are you at with it?
I just met with township staff to review a full draft of all of these packets and procedures. These are mostly related to the entitlements process, so things that go run through the Planning Commission, site plan approvals, rezoning applications, conditional use applications. And the revisions made to these packets are really to clarify the steps that are codified in your ordinance. And the justice revisions to that process, I think, would have to run through the Planning Commission because it would require modifying your zoning ordinance. And if it was a change in process to, you know, a building official, that would be your code of ordinances and it would be coming to the board for final approval. So we're at that point where we're completed kind of a full first draft and, you know, I'm anticipating that we will bring that to the Planning Commission soon for discussion. But after that, you know, I anticipate that there's still a good amount of work to be done here to finish up the project and complete the applications. It really doesn't touch on the work that happens on the, on the building official side. It runs through the site plan approval process and that, and that kind of thing. The building department will carry that forward.
These are like those five packets that you put together?
Correct.
It's in my pile to go through. Haven't had a chance yet to really, Ms. Zelenok and then Mr. Ains.
So I see the dollar amount, but what is the timeframe for completion?
Hopefully two months, if not sooner.
Okay.
We need the authorization for the phase two to complete the project essentially. We came, we came forward with a budget that we thought was needed to complete the work and we dialed that back at the request of the township and it is not enough to, frankly, it is not enough to complete the project, which is why we're back here asking for a phase two authorization.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Planning Commission to work with the planner on the revised development packet and procedures phase two not to exceed $3,000. Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Nelson? Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes. Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm not prepared to make any further motions in regards to the 2021 work plan.
Okay.
Julie, thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming out and hanging with us here. I know we're trying to get. All right?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, and, you know, we will just continue to coordinate as you want to bring forward any of these work plan items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is in regards to a memo from Ms. Zelenak and the Personnel Committee in regards to hiring a full-time front desk person.
Sure, I'll make a motion to hire Ms. Stacy McDonald at the rate of $18.72 for the front desk slash building department assistant as a full-time position at the projected yearly cost of $50,560.
I'll support.
Motion by Zelenak, supported by Chick. Discussion on the motion. I'd say that it's nice to see that we're able to do this. I know that there's been need of additional support in the building department, and it'll be nice to be able to really kind of get a handle on this stuff, especially as we start reopening and having five-day-a-work, five-day-a-week office hours and such. Going to go to Ms. Otto and then Ms. Manley.
Okay, so then I would like to know what happens to the position of the election specialist? And if that could be addressed?
Okay, Ms. Otto, I will go to Ms. Manley, and then over to Ms. Zelenak.
Um, my first thought is on that, we may not have any elections this year. So, I think for right now, we will be okay. I am hoping that in 2022, I know we will have elections, that the board would support us hiring, I guess we haven't worked it out yet, possibly a temporary person in the clerk's office to help with elections, because we're going to need somebody trained. So, that's something that we're going to have to deal with in the future. But we'll be all right for now.
What I like is we will have someone in the office that has that, that has done that and has experience in that, that if we run into a pinch, we, I mean, certainly.
We can use her.
She'll definitely be an asset.
Yeah, resource.
I, I, the reason why I want, I asked it, because I wanted the public people to know that this was thought out. This wasn't something that we say, let's just do this. It was very well thought out.
Right.
All right, Ms. Zelenak, did you have any further comments?
Yes, that's what I wanted to add, actually, Ms. Otto, is that after the election, and without us having a front desk person since about March, Ms. McDonald stepped in and started to help with the front desk position, which was mostly, which is mostly at that point in time treasury functions, such as cash receding. She works very well with the public, and she has done a really good job. So, I think it's an asset to keep somebody that has experience within the office with, with the public and has done a good job as, as well. So, going forward, there's probably 10% more on the treasury functions from the front desk that she would have to learn, and then the rest would be learning about the building department. So, as far as we're concerned, she's fully trained and has been performing since mid-December as, as with the job. So, we're very pleased. And the opportunity came, so that's why we, you know, made, as you, as you know, being on the Personnel Committee, that's why we made this recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Manley?
Um, yes, I'd like to know who's going to present this offer to her and when, and if she does accept, if she could start on a Monday for payroll purposes, that would be great. And then if she does accept the position, I'm hoping that the clerk's department will be able to use her when needed also, in spare time or when available, because we will still need some help on some things also.
Right, should be a team effort. I imagine that Mr. would be the one responsible for presenting the offer to her, getting accepted.
So, could we make a motion that the?
I'd like to know.
Can we, yeah, can we make a motion that the office or the offer be presented? I'll make a motion that the offer be presented to Ms. Stacy McDonald. Perme? Oh, sorry, you're right. Thank you, I'll make it afterwards.
All right.
Ms. Manley raises a good point.
Appreciate it.
A good point.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually comment on Ms. Manley's comment, and that was my question as well. I know Christina works very, very hard, and there's a lot to be done in the clerk's office, and Stacy has been a big help to her in doing that. And so, she's going to be at a little bit of a deficit, but it, it's good to have someone in the office that's cross-trained, that can do treasury items, that can do clerk items, that can do front desk items, and work in the building department. So, she's going to kind of be doing it all, so appreciate that, and keeping fingers crossed, she says.
Great. All right, Mr. Ains?
I wanted to mention, somebody had asked if I had been involved, if I talked to Stacy to see if she was going to be open to taking the job, and I did speak to her, and she's not made a response to anyone else. She's waiting till after tonight's meeting, so someone could talk to her tomorrow. But she seemed very interested that she would take the job if it's offered.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Yes, Ms. Manley?
Who is that someone going to be? I think this position is under the manager, so.
Yeah, we're going to make a motion on that in just a moment, once we called, roll on this motion.
Okay.
And that's fine with me.
Yep. So, is there any other questions, or Ms. Manley, can you call the roll?
Yep, Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes.
Yep.
Okay, seven zero.
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Ains present to, oh, what is Stacy's last name? I'm sorry.
McDonald.
Yeah. To Ms. McDonald, the offer of the position of front desk clerk and assistant to the building department tomorrow, and that she start in that position on a Monday in order to assist. Does that cover all of the bases?
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Any discussion?
I don't think she's in tomorrow, so if someone could call her, that would be great.
You do that, Mr. Ains?
Yes, I may need to ask Christina what the phone number is, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I can call her.
Yeah, and just for clarification, this, this is a position that direct reports to Mr. Ains as the township manager. All right, yes, Mr. Ains?
I would mention that the board had identified some years back that you have a lot of part-time employees, and there might be an interest in moving to having more full-time people, so you had more stability. So, I think this accomplishes that goal as well.
I think it does. All right, no other comments? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yeah.
Seven zero.
All right. We're getting through this, guys. Hang in, hang in there with me. So, the next item on the agenda is a process for which the determination will be made whether the attorney should be present at our meetings. What I would recommend is that we establish an executive committee, at which time the executive committee, if two or two out of the three members believes that it would benefit the board to have the attorney present, they can determine that at that time. I, myself, someone else on the, and two other people on, or two other people on the board, I would say should be on that committee. I guess this is a discussion. I'm not making that as a motion. I'm making it a discussion. So, Ms. Chick, and then Mr. Nelson.
Yep, it is a discussion. We can go to a motion when we figure it out. The way I looked at it, we had four options. Either one person makes a decision, but that didn't seem to work out very well last time, or we create a policy where that he, the attorney is just present whenever he sends an opinion letter, or there's a contract, or we create, like you said, a committee, three people, three board members to make that call, or we just do nothing at all. So, I like the idea of having three people making that decision, because the attorney presence at the meetings has always been helpful. It's never been a problem, or a waste of time, I should say.
Right. All right, Mr. Nelson?
Hey, I, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence about this just because I don't really want to put another thing in another committee to kind of create more issues. I mean, I, I feel like, I feel like that really should be one person's responsibility, maybe even the township manager, and we should be able to reach out to him if, if there is some sort of issue there, and, and be able to discuss with him if we need the attorney. We should have one person delegating to the attorney. I, I just don't see the need for this committee, because all it's going to do is, who's instructing the attorney to be here or not? And that really should just be one person. Kind of where I stand, I think the township manager should be able to delegate this. We should be able to, again, just a simple email or something. We should be able to discuss this. Obviously, we shouldn't be able to decide in a board meeting whether the attorney will be here on the next board meeting. I think that's fairly obvious. And so, just simple communication. I think that's what this all boils down to, if we deem it an issue.
I'll raise two points on that, then I'll go to Ms. Manley, and then Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Otto. So, two, the two points to raise is the township manager gets put in a very precarious position when he has three board members that say, I want the attorney present, and you have four board members that say, we don't believe he is necessary to be present. That's one point. So, it puts the manager in a position of, of having to make a call that could be contrary to the majority of the board. Okay? Secondly, you have an attorney who has expressed repeatedly that he thinks it's not in the best interest of the township board to be asking him questions in a public meeting. He would much prefer that he communicate those in privileged communications, because the last thing an attorney is going to do is tell you something in a public meeting that may be detrimental to you. And we've seen, just in the few meetings we've had, when, when, I mean, he was present in the first couple, he repeated those words, or he said, you know, I do not like communicating with my clients, you know, in a public meeting. So, what we are trying to do is find a fine balance here where, you know, three, three board members could make a determination, might be able to have a discussion to, to determine the, the importance of having him there, and if two out of those three board members felt that it was necessary, then he would be requested. That avoided putting the manager in a very precarious spot with the board. Now, you know, we're a pretty cohesive board. I, I would hope that that wouldn't happen in, in the future, but it's, it's a better solution than drafting all kinds of policy about it. You know, and it's, you know, we haven't had a whole lot of things to, to, that require him being here, but the, the time could come. And that's why executive committee was one of the thoughts that I had. Let me go to Ms. Manley, then Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Otto. Ms. Manley?
Um, yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with Mr. Nelson. I mean, for a committee to have to get the agenda, get everything that's involved in that agenda, and then to decide whether the attorney is needed or not. I mean, it's kind of a quick timeframe, and when everybody gets their packets and when the discussion's going to be had. I mean, I think that the manager should be able to make that decision, and if the board is adamant on having the manager there, I don't see why we couldn't, if four people want him there, have him there.
No, four people want him there, yeah.
But I don't feel that we need to.
Three want him.
Over this.
Three.
What happens if three want him there, and not the, and not four?
Well, then it's not really a, I guess that's something, I don't know. It just seems kind of silly to go through this big process every two weeks.
There's not a big process. If there's a legal question, a phone call's made. An executive committee of three members is not subject to, to open meetings. Exactly, we're not having a meeting. The question is, is do you think he needs to be present for this? Yes or no? And then.
But it's those three people getting together after they've read the packet after. I just don't find it necessary.
When it comes out. Just the agenda.
You get a draft.
You get a draft agenda.
Okay, I just don't find it necessary, but I think it should be a manager decision. So, that's my opinion.
Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Otto.
Okay, so, I appreciate the fact that the attorney doesn't like to be questioned on his opinion, but he works for the board, and we have the right to ask him questions. And often those questions come up during a meeting, not before a meeting, during a discussion. I believe Mr. Burns, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, actually attended one meeting, the first meeting of every month. Am I right or wrong? He always was there, whether we needed him or not, and inevitably, a question was asked of him when he was there. But, like I said, I appreciate the fact that he doesn't like to be questioned, but, you know, the public wants to hear too, the, from the attorney, when he, when he's asked a question by the board. And my only issue is, is that those questions, people say, well, you know, call him before the meeting. The questions often come up during the meeting, not before the meeting, as the discussion is being had. That's all I have.
I wholeheartedly disagree with you, Ms. Chick. And the reason I do is, it's not him not wanting to answer your question, it's him protecting your best interests. That's what his job is. We hire an attorney to protect our, our best interest. And what he's saying is, your best interest is, I don't answer this question for you in public. That's what he's saying. And he's absolutely right. And you better, we better have asked Paul Burns a question every single meeting he was at, because by God, we were paying him through the notes, and we're paying.
He was, he was on a retainer, so I want everybody to understand that the use of his retainer, part of his retainer is that he showed up at meetings.
And we paid, we paid for that. We don't pay for.
We did.
We don't, we don't think a retainer, correct?
Right.
Nelson? Sorry, Ms. Otto, and then Mr. Nelson.
Okay. What I would prefer is that we, and I agree with Josh, is that, and Kathy, that we don't need to do overkill with these meetings. At some point, we, we do have to trust in the judgment, but if judgment isn't being trust, then I feel the policy may be in order, especially if we have contracts. Now, I do understand that if the, if there are certain situations where attorney-client privilege has to be had, he does not want it in public, that's a different story, and that's, that is done with closed meetings. And that's in conjunction with the closed me, you know, the closed meetings are in conjunction with the Open Meetings Act. So, there are things that we are discussing, like signing somebody's contract or any type of contract that comes up where we may have a question, because like Janet said, something was raised there. And it's not necessarily anything that has to do with a risk to the township.
Right.
Thing, it has more to do with understanding what the language is.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Nelson?
Mostly a policy I would, I would prefer.
Okay, policies are gentleman's agreements when you're talking elected boards, just remember that. So, if you don't have trust, a policy's not going to fix trust. It's not.
Because just, just a follow-up to all this. I mean, if most of the questions are held, like, come up during the meetings, then I don't see how a committee is going to be able to figure out.
Exactly.
For the meeting. It, it, it's just, it's just making three people responsible for what the whole board should be responsible for, is really what it is. All in all, I, I, I'm going to come up with a motion, just because I, I think this is, we need to get this settled regardless. I, I move to designate the township manager to determine the attorney as needed on a per-meeting basis, and, and to potentially work out with the attorney, as we had it before, on-call as necessary for any potential questions we could have during a meeting.
Support.
Okay, it's motion by Nelson, support by Manley. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Moko?
I'm trying. Yours, Josh, just to be clear, you want the lawyer to be on-call during the meeting, so we, I mean, that would be the same as attending, basically, if he's on-call.
No, no.
Yeah.
What I mean is, the ability to call, and I think, I think we talked about this before, the ability to be able to be called during a meeting if necessary, so that we wouldn't be ramping up the charges, because the majority of our taxpayers aren't going to want us paying for an attorney to ask him one question to be here a whole meeting. We need to give him a call, and we deem that necessary, the board deems that necessary during a meeting. We should, we, we might be able to work it out, and that's why I said we should try to work out. We should try to work that out and see if it is by chance possible. I'm open to an amendment on this, too, we can get this potentially worked out. No, by on-call, by on-call, I want to clarify that I mean, the potential to be called during the meeting, if necessary.
Does he charge for calls?
I would imagine.
Well, yeah.
I know, I know, on-call.
Quarter hour.
That's right.
Ms. Manley?
I thought I heard, and I think this is where Josh is going, that he is available during our meetings if we need him. So I guess that's something that we would clarify with him, but I'm not sure if Mr. Ains said that, or if he has said that at a meeting.
He has said he tries to be.
Okay.
That he tries to be.
Right, and I guess we can't hold him to the fire on that, but it would be a conversation that we would have to have with Mr. Fink.
And, and I think it helps build that trust to begin with. I mean, again, we need that trust there, and it's a two-way street. If someone's working for the board, and we're going to be paying him, if he's, if he's available, and if he says he's available most of the time, he should hold, be able to be held to that responsibility.
But we do not pay him to be on retainer, to be, to be readily available. He is, he has contract, and I believe his rate is.
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
I think so.
Yep.
So we.
Correct.
Twenty-five already by, by now? So, yes, Ms. Zalnuck?
So my, my comment is, in my opinion, if there's an agenda item that he or she has written a memo for, I would like them present at the meeting. Just as tonight, we had a couple questions for our attorney, because she had provided us memos. And one of them, she said she would work with us. The good thing is, she knows what we're asking for. And I think that's the benefit of having them, when they have written a memo to the board, to be present to discuss that memo and potentially ask question, or answer questions. And when it's not appropriate, they can do as Ms. Bellisle did tonight, and said, I will write something up for you. That's my comment.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Ains, hang on.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments?
Well, can we repeat the motion, please?
Um, sure, sure. The motion as it stands, I'm trying to remember.
Get it written down.
But the, the motion as it stands is to, is to authorize the township manager to designate the attorney for, for a meeting as necessary, and to have him available to call or on-call to be, to be able to answer questions with no retainer fee, but, but to simply call during the meetings as deemed necessary by the board in a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Ms. Manley, did you have a comment?
If, if Mr. Ains, or I will myself clarify that with Mr. Fink, that what the charges would be, and if he does watch the meetings, or, I mean, either one of us can have that conversation. If Mr. Ains wants to do it, that's fine. If not, I, I can do it. So I guess we can decide that after the motion.
Okay.
Good.
Yep. Mr. Ains, did you have something?
I wanted to clarify, first off, Mr. Fink, during his interview, I think, made it clear that he would try to look for any ways he could save you on legal fees, and he's accomplished that a number of ways. So, one of those is that he is asking me, meeting by meeting, if he should be present. And if I don't think he should be at all, then he's not making himself available. But if I think he is, he's taking a phone call if I want him to, or if you want him to. Or he may do it where he's watching the, the meeting without charging you. Or he may be working on some other item of business for you that he can do at the same time. So he's not out to get maximum money out of you. He is trying to save you money. But sometimes, I don't think there'll be anything, and then something comes up. So I guess that's a judgment call, however you want to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Ains. All right, there's no other comments. Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
Yep. Chick?
No.
Dignan?
No.
Zelenak?
No.
Moko?
No.
Otto? You're muted.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. That fails four-three.
Hang on. The next item on the agenda is managers update.
Oh, wait, are we done with this item?
Unless there's another motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to make a motion to designate three board members to make the decision on whether or not the attorney should be present at a meeting.
I'll support.
Motion by Chick, supported by Zalnuck, to establish an executive committee in regards to reviewing whether or not the attorney needs to be present at a meeting. Any other discussion? None? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Moko?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley? No. Chick?
Yes.
So, I think that failed four-three.
We are now moving.
So we didn't make any progress, yep.
Hope we're moving on. So managers, managers update. Ms. Ains?
That's really there in case the board has anything, but I did want to point one thing out. I had forwarded to you some information that the state constitutional statutory revenue sharing, if you recall, the state gets together their different people, and they predict what the, the tax revenue will be for the revenue sharing. And they were very surprised at the last briefing they gave us, that they actually are much better off than was originally anticipated. And in fact, it's on their website that going ahead to next year, they're projecting that Northfield Township will see a 5.4% increase in the amount of revenue sharing over what you got this year. There were a couple of things struck me. One is, they were saying that with people doing so much online buying, there's a huge amount of sales tax involved in that. Whereas when people were using the money to buy services, there is not apparently a tax on services. So by diverting the money to purchases, that has generated a lot of extra sales tax money. The other thing I wasn't aware of is that in Michigan, unemployment compensation is taxable as income. And because so many people are on it, and because of the federal subsidy increasing the amount that people receive, they are way ahead in their income tax collections off of that group of people. So just a couple of things to note, but it's good news.
All right. I guess I have one question for you, Mr. Ains, in regards to, I realize that the weather is what it is, but where do we stand on 75 Barker with mitigating the, the.
Brownfield.
The ground. Stuff.
At this point, the weather's part of it, but I was also waiting to see what happened with the lawsuit. So it has been filed, is my understanding, to try to get the 5,000 back. We don't absolutely need it to go ahead, but we talked, we were in the board about the two simultaneously, I thought.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should hold, hold it up because of that. Those are two separate issues.
Yep.
I, I, I really want to move forward with that and get that done and out of the way. That is, that is, that is something that could be a ham, you know, could really hinder our ability to move on that property with the right party interested. All right, anybody have anything else for the manager? Yes, Ms. Chick?
Mr. Ains, on Mr. Grunell's proposal, I see that he submitted a concept plan. Is he planning on sending this to the Planning Commission soon? What is going on with that?
My understanding is it's been submitted to the Building Department, and then they will be passed along to the Planning Commission. But he still has some steps to make before he gets it to the Planning Commission. It's being reviewed, I believe, by the consulting engineer for the township, so that they can see what would be necessary.
Okay, someone, also, another question, I don't see it on here, so maybe it's not part of the proposal, but someone had said that there's a gas station proposal going.
It's on there.
Is it? And what am I not looking at here, then?
It's on the corner of Territorial and Whitmore Lake Road, the point. That's.
Says Crossroad Market.
Yep.
That's a gas station.
That is a gas station.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
It's a PUD, I do know that. And this is out of the, this is coming from the packet that's going to go to the Planning Commission eventually.
Thank you.
No. All right. Nothing else for the manager? The next, the announcement, I don't have any announcements. Petitions and Communications, any members of the public that would like to address the board, you may do so at this time by raising your hand. And. Go ahead, Mr. Olney.
Yes, Admiral again, still Whitmore Lake resident. I was just curious how the advertisement of 75 Barker listing, or how that's going to be handled, like.
That's.
He, a Realtor, is there going to be any associated price with it? Just, we're just going to hope people will find out that we're accepting offers till the 25th. None of that was really dealt with in that motion, so.
The committee.
I would, I would hope that's dealt with, and that it's put out to the public for everyone to see. There was a lot of talk tonight about people knowing about meetings. I would hope you would want people to know just as much that, that, you know, you're taking offers for a property that the township has. And I was also curious if a lot split would even be possible, if there was a linear building on Barker Road, because the access to both lots wouldn't be on Barker Road. And I thought that was part of one of the requirements for a lot split, that both lots need access to Barker Road. Just a thought. And once again, I was just wondering if there's any updates to the update on the sewer backup, Ms. Ains? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the board at this time? Please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone go on to petitions, or go on to board member comments. You know, I, I will comment that I don't think it's advantageous for the board to put any dollar amounts to these offers, let these offers come in sealed and be what they are. You know, I, it's going to be up to the committee to determine that, and to make it widely known. I would discourage us to list it with a Realtor. There's no reason to pay that commission if you don't have to. Honestly, I'd like to see the Realtor's sign come down from that property. That is, that Realtor is not under contract any longer, and I do not intend to pay that Realtor commission, at least as one individual board member. But, so the committee will need to come up with that and get that information out and find the right way to do so. So those are, those are my comments on that front. The, let's see, the lots, the lot split, I guess, I'll address with Mr. Olney's, is the linear building does not have to take up the entire lot. As a matter of fact, in the, in the plan that is, then the downtown synthesis plan, it actually does not take up the whole lot. And with the other building gone, there would be plenty of room for access from Barker, if, if someone wanted to propose that. So, all right, those are all the comments I have. Anyone else like to comment on anything? Yes, Ms. Chick, please, and then Ms. Manley.
When will the committee be meeting to advertise for this property for sale? And I think that they need to do it in a way that it gets out there quickly, and to a wide audience, because the timeline is very aggressive for getting proposals back.
It is, it is. And I'll, I'll be sending out an email about that for the committee tomorrow at some point, and then we'll get together and figure that out quickly. It will be, yeah, it's, it's going to be quick, I'll tell you that. Ms. Manley?
I just have a couple of announcements, not really a follow-up. Sewer bills go out February 1st, that will have the new rate on them of $102. And then, if there's any committee members out there, or ZBA and the Planning Commission members need to get sworn in. Christina's there Mondays and Tuesdays from nine to one, or 1:30 to four. If you could please let your people know to come in and get sworn in, call her, email her, something to get that done.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Manley. Another announcement to the public there, we are still in need of members for the Board of Review. We're still looking for two board members for the Board of Review. We are still looking for another alternate for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We do anticipate, I know there's some members from LPC, we do anticipate doing some appointments, or taking up some appointments at the next meeting, in the first meeting in February. There's some LPC members that have come through that, that we're looking at appointing there. The board will consider them. The, let's see, I think that's all I've got. Ms. Otto?
Yeah, in regards to appointments to boards, Chuck Stoyer, I think on the next board meeting, we need to put him on for approval. He has been on the board. His term came up in July, it never came on to the board for approval. He wanted to be reappointed. I think he put in his, an email in stating that, and the board, Township Board, never got on our agenda. So he wants to continue. He's the vice chair, so I wanted to make sure that that gets on our agenda.
That is, that is on my list.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to fill out a form?
No, he's all set. He's all set. Yeah, and as I, as I told him, I said, you know, when your appointment is up, it's not up until we replace you.
Right.
Or, or until you formally write a resignation. So he serves until we replace him or reappoint him. So I just thought it was going to be for life. So I'm going to tell him that. But, all right, anybody else, anything else?
I just have a clarification, Mr. Supervisor. So, Ms. Manley, all committees, LPC, Parks and all that have to come and get sworn in, is that correct?
I would assume so, yes. I'm not positive about the.
Or is it just like the ZBA and Plan?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think.
So does Parks and.
Oh, DDA.
Does Parks and Recs have to get sworn in?
Sworn in, don't they?
Our Planning Commission doesn't have to, as far as I know.
Well, yeah, you, yeah.
Really?
They have to, absolutely.
Every time?
Because, yeah. Well, I, I think, once you're sworn in, I think you're.
Okay.
And I don't know.
Right.
Do you have to get sworn in as an elected official every time?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would say yes.
So my question is, is it the DD, is it, is it ZBA and Planning Commission people that need to get sworn in, paid members on committee, you know, Planning Commission and ZBA boards? Or is it, you know, Parks and Recs volunteered, LPC volunteer, as well as DDA? So I.
Is it mandatory? Is it mandatory?
I would think it would be everybody because you're serving the community.
Okay.
And you have to take an oath of, of serving. I mean.
It's.
Okay.
As far as I know, it's just paid positions, the planning commission, ZBA board of review.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We can always clarify.
For that clarification. Yep. No, I, I, I was thinking that, but I, I appreciate the clarification.
So does the township send out notice to the new members that they have to come in and get sworn in? They might not know.
We would hope that the, as other commissions would tell them or.
Uh, we, I don't think we did. Yeah.
When they get notified that they've been appointed, they should get notified that they have to come in to get sworn in.
Okay.
Yes. And we'll make.
I guess whoever notifies them needs to make sure that they tell them that.
Right. All right. Anything else, guys? This is the longest meeting. We have, we had quite a, quite a stack of stuff to get through tonight. So.
It's early.
Appreciate.
It better not be a trend.
Kidding me? It's my bedtime. I've got to get, no, I'm just kidding. So, all right. With that, motion to adjourn, is there support?
Also.
Support.
Everybody supported?
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned.
Good night.
Nine fifty-three. All right.
Everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks. You too.